This morning, we have Brother Danny Ellidge with us to lead us in the invocation. And Commissioner McCam, the pledges, please.
Loving God, Heavenly Father, we just want to thank you and we just praise you, Lord. You are holy, 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 Lord. There's no one like you. There's nothing beside you. Nothing you can't do. And in the name of Jesus, Lord, we just ask that you would just take over. That, Lord, we just ask for Holy Spirit to permeate this place with your presence. And with your presence, you offer peace and harmony and grace and mercy and contentment. Lord, I just thank you for each one here. Thank you for each one of these folks on the court, Lord, that not only do they have their personal responsibilities, but they also have the responsibilities of the people. Lord, we just thank you that they take those items seriously. And, Lord, we just ask that those decisions that are made would be yours. As these things in the name, it's above every name, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the blood for which I stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Mr. Eldridge, thanks, sir. All right. Well, the time is 9:03. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting of the Henderson County Commissioners' Court to order. Is there any citizens' comments?
No, sir.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court held on January the 23rd, 2024. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
I do have one comment on one of the agenda items. There's just some misspelled names. Kristy Turner and Casey Watson. Casey is spelled with a C and it should be a K. And Kristy's spelled with a K and it should be a CH. It's in the middle of the second page.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Do you have those changes?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments, additions, or deletions? If not, if we have a motion to approve as amended?
Judge, I move we approve the Commissioners' Court's minutes for January 23rd, 2024, as amended.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the minutes of January the 23rd, 2024 of Commissioners' Court to approve them as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passage unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action to accept the racial profiling report from the Henderson County Fire Marshal's Office for filing purposes only. Court, this is a full exemption filing. Fire Marshal is here. Present any discussion or comments? Hearing non-entertained motion.
I'll make the motion.
Say again.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the, or accept the racial profiling report from the Henderson County Fire Marshal's Office for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passage unanimously. Item number three is consider and take action on request from Justice of the Peace, Precinct Five, to fill a possible vacant position. And I believe we have the judge with us this morning. Please come forward.
Good morning, gentlemen, and Ms. Spivey. I have two clerks currently in my office, and one has turned in her notice effective February the 7th. And it's my understanding that the current policy of the county is that that position will be left vacant until the clerk who's leaving's time is paid out. She currently has about four weeks of time, which would leave a vacancy in my office for a month. This is our very busy time because we are the truancy court. We have, last year, had about 100 truancies filed in our court, which sometimes puts 20 to 25 people in the courtroom at a time. We also are now taking all of the parent contributing cases that go with those truancies. So it's just a busy time. In addition to that, our, hopefully this year will be better, but our inquest last year doubled from the previous two years. And so I go out on about 100 inquests. So we just have a lot. And of course, increased evictions. But I'm just hoping that the county would approve us going ahead and filling that vacancy immediately after Jamie's last day, rather than waiting to pay her four weeks of paid time off that she's accrued. Thank you.
Well, Judge, if you would.
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Monk, she spoke to, policy is that we allow those positions to fully pay out because of the finite amount of budget that is set for each position. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Court, questions, comments?
It's also, I believe, and I think this is correct, Jamie is on a step two. She's at a higher pay rate, right, than a new clerk would be. So that, yes. So that would leave, you know, a little bit of money there.
What about the, when the new one comes in, there will be some 90-day probation of insurance money that could be moved over too, also?
As long as it's not a current county employee.
Yeah.
Do we not have a floating clerk anymore?
My office is the floating clerk.
It is the floating.
Yes, sir.
So is she gonna come in after the two weeks that Jamie's gone, or is she wanting to start immediately and have any training or anything?
Well, that would be my preference, of course, but I'm told the odds of that happening aren't great. So either one, but definitely immediately once Jamie's gone.
Well, you might make it, you might be able to make it work if you waited the two weeks before you hired her. And then, because with the insurance savings and with the pay scale one.
Yes, sir.
But there wouldn't be any way to do it if you hired her right now.
I understand.
Do you already have somebody that's looking for a job?
Yes, sir. And I've asked Norma to also visit with her. I need someone bilingual. This is someone with not any experience, but I feel good about her. But I've asked Norma also to visit with her, to give me her opinion. And she's also told me that she, several people have asked her, she knows of several people looking for a job.
What is the insurance cost per month? Trying to remember. How much was it?
It's at $9.50.
$9.50.
It does give us about $3,300 if the individual comes in at a step one. The individual comes in at that, plus the insurance, it does give us that ability.
After two weeks?
Yeah, after, after Jamie leaves.
When she leaves. Oh, no, no, you're.
She's got, she's got 77.7 sick time hours, and we gotta pay up to 80, I think, pay 80, up to 80 hours of sick time and.
Yeah, how much?
And 65 hours of vacation. It's gotta be paid to her.
Is it just the amount of overall? I guess the question is, are your clerks cross-trained?
We have worked hard to cross-train them. Jamie is currently handling the civil, and my other clerk handles the criminal. She had been there a year when I took office and was not proficient at handling the civil cases. And so I had her spend some time with Marcella and was told that she could learn it, but it would be quite some time before she was proficient.
There is quite a bit of difference between criminal and civil.
Yes. And I currently, of cour, what I'm doing right now is I have Jamie, you know, when we're not in court, I have Jamie sitting back and trying to let Melissa handle everything. I may have another opening. Not by my choice necessarily.
No, understood.
Yes.
What's the current pay for a step one, or?
$36.50.
So would the, would the 33 make a?
Actually, there is.
33 that we had left over, possibly?
Yeah, no.
Should cover, it should.
Say here, look, she's actually, Jamie's at a step three.
Oh, okay.
So it'd be two steps.
Mm-hmm, they'd be two steps. Work, I just did off one step.
What is step three?
Step three's 37,855. Step one's 36,500. So there's, there's more than. Ms. Monk, as we're batting back and forth.
I think the shortfall is going to be consequential to use a fine. I do understand trying to get somebody in to train immediately. There's not gonna be much time. We should be finding somebody a day because presentations in the past week.
Right. I mean, there's a small office.
You also handle all the truancy cases?
Yes, sir.
Though we could, got money in the budget, align item for the step plan stuff. Is that something that could be used to offset that office?
Yeah, there's gonna be small.
I hate to use it this early in the year, but.
It's not gonna be much.
What I was gonna say when we asked about the truancy, that, that was when Judge Barnett was in, in the change in the law, making one court consolidated juvenile court was the plan that we set upon. And in that, along with, at that point in time, the consolidation of JP 6 into that is why we ended up having two clerks at that location and for the floating capability at that time. But that's been a number of years ago now.
Some other, some other time also, I'd love to spend a few minutes and brag to you about some things we accomplished with truancy last year. But also because the truancy, there's a fund that, I believe there's around $26,000 in, that can only be used directly related to truancy. We've talked about some options using that before, but once we're kind of set in place, it may be that we can work together to unset, to offset some other costs. You know, if I get with, with the money lady and work it out, that we could, we can probably offset some other costs to move some money around in the budget as well. Because we're not, I don't think, currently using any of that money for anything. Yeah.
We all run into the same problem when we, when we have an employer retire. If they've been a employee that had time saved up. But in this instance, with, with the amount of difference being negligible whenever we do it, I would agree that probably since she's handling those cases, she probably needs a clerk.
And she has turned in her.
Yes, her last.
She's not going back out.
No. Her last day's February 7th. She's accepted a position elsewhere.
Court, any further questions or comments? Entertained motion.
I'd like to say thank you to Jamie for all she's done while she's been here at the county. And that being said, I'd like to make a motion to fill the vacancy after Jamie leaves.
Approving the request.
Approving the request to fill a vacant position.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Spivey, seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the request from Justice of the Peace, Precinct Five, to fill a poss, to fill the possible vacant position. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor. Passage unanimously. Item number four, consider and take action on a donation from the Tool Cemetery Association for material that is needed to blade and overlay the road inside the cemetery located in Precinct One. Commissioner?
Yes, Court. This is the agreement we approved last week with Tool Cemetery. And this is just coming back and accepting the donation for the material that's needed for the road inside the cemetery.
For the public's consideration, what is the amount of that donation?
The amount is $4,000. That's how much the material is gonna cost that will be needed.
Court, questions, comments? Hearing non-entertained motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the donation of $4,000 from Tool Cemetery Association to pay them, for the materials needed to overlay the road inside the cemetery located in Precinct One.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and seconded by Commissioner Tully to accept the $4,000 donation from the Tool Cemetery Association for materials that, that needed, sorry, 4,000. Who'd that say?
For me?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Rich, I thought I said Richardson.
Oh, he said Tully.
Excuse me. I will repeat. Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, to accept the donation of $4,000 from the Tool Cemetery Association for materials that is needed to blade and overlay the road inside the cemetery located in Precinct One. All those in favor? Passage unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number five, consider and take action on interlocal agreement for the city-county plat approval with the city of Tool, Texas, giving Tool the authority and exclusive control over plating with the, within the ETJ. Commissioner Spivey?
Yes, Court. This is something we've been working on for a few months with the city of Tool, where they can help with the subdivision rules and regulations inside the ETJ of the city. And we have Mr. Fladmark here from the city. If any questions are wanted to be asked.
Councilman, if you can join us, sir.
So I'm Michael Fladmark. I'm the city councilman for the city of Tool. I have been a city councilman for over the last 10 years. And so first of all, I want to thank the court for having me come up today and allowing to speak on this. And it's been a pleasure working with Commissioner Spivey on this interlocal agreement. And the reason for this is because, as well as everyone in Henderson County knows, over the last four years or so, we've experienced tremendous growth. Now, the city of Tool is, it was established a little over 50 years ago. And it was established as a, basically, a residential weekend community on the west side of Cedar Creek Lake. Since about 2020, we have been experiencing tremendous growth, just like the rest of Henderson County. Since that time, we've had the opportunity to somewhat reorganize our city and develop the expertise to be able, and, and management skills, to be able to start taking a look at managing development outside our city limits, which is our ETJ. And we have the ability to do that. And so I, I just want to say that we look forward to working in partnership with the county on this because it's, we're not going alone into this. We're still going to be working together on, on all of this. It just gives us the opportunity to help manage that growth in a, in a good way. The other thing I'd like to bring up is that we shouldn't be the only small city or city in Henderson County that's taking a look at this approach and working with the county and being able to manage growth within their community and their ETJ. So please give this strong consideration, and I look forward to your adoption. Thank you very much.
Councilman, few questions.
So whatever y'all wanna do, I'm for it. I just want to tell you, I have one of those in my precinct. So, and the fire mar, the fire marshal and I are working on a job right now. So do, do y'all, are y'all under the understanding that you can take your city codes and ordinances and all that kind of stuff and put it out there into your ETJ?
That is our understanding, yes.
So I've been told that that's where you can't. And I'm just gonna play both sides. And Shane, Ms. Joy, is that, is that the truth? That they can do subdivisions, that they split the lot up and do residential and stuff? Because my, my town tells, or, I'll say my, the town that's in my precinct says that they can't, if they don't split it up and do residential, that their codes cannot be enforced outside the ETJ. I just need somebody to tell me the truth. Or, I don't say the truth, tell me the answer.
That might be something more directed, if he's willing to come up. We have our assistant county attorney with us. If you would, please come forward.
Yes, Your Honor.
I do, I do want to say while, while he's coming forward, that this is the same agreement that we do have with the city of Gun Barrel that was enacted a number of years ago and is actually required by state law to have an agreement between the county and the municipalities concerning the ETJs. ETJs are a very delicate issue these days. Last six years or so, the mood of the Texas legislature is to loosen up control in those areas. But the law that gives us this was passed in 2001, I believe, that gave the impetus for these type of agreements. So with that, I'll pass.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners. Mr. Davis did look at this ETJ with the city of Tool, and he did say it is similar to the one in Gun Barrel City and also in the city of Athens. The statute in this does generally limit that to plating and subdivision, plating-related ordinances. So there are some in there, which can include something like a public nuisance, odors, things like that. As far as how far that goes into voting, taxation, those are more complicated issues, and I don't have that answer today. So some ordinances can and some can't is, is kind of the, the issue there. And they're statutory.
Yeah. So, and I've been told by some city, one city manager is, is that the ETJs is not, they're like, not powerful or not, not anything anymore because of the, what the state has done. So, but what I'm talking about is, we have a parcel of land, and they're not gonna do anything to it. And we're gonna build an apartment complex, or we're gonna build a construct, a, a business there.
Okay.
That any ordinances that the county, that the city would have, that that ordinance would, ordinances would not be able to be adopted inside that ETJ. Why? I don't know. I don't know if it's a picking and choosing of the city of Gun Barrel or, or what, but they won't do anything. I have a three, a proposed apartment complex. And because the plat is not being, or that parcel of 16 acres is not being split up, their hands are out.
Commissioner Tully, that's a good question. I don't have the answer for you today. I have read legal articles that say ETJs are too powerful. And I've read some that say they're not powerful enough. And so there's kind of a debate there. As far as your specific question, I don't have an answer today, but that's something that myself or Mr. Davis can look into for you.
I mean, 'cause there, there's some areas that they, they won't do that, that's a, just a acre of land, and I can go put anything I wanted there in the ETJ because I'm not splitting it up for residential or subdivision, and it doesn't make any sense for.
Sure.
A plating, there's no plating fees to be collected, so we're out. But, I mean, I'm all for it. I know that the city of Tools got people, or got people coming, there's people there. And 274 is being really blown up over there. So, I mean, it's, it's great, and it takes the, kind of a burden off of us and the commissioner, but I just want some answers.
And Mr. Ohm, interpretation comes into play in much of. interpretation comes into play in much of this. Is that, is that correct? I mean, each, uh, each entity has its own interpretation or take on their authorities.
There's different agenda groups that have their takes on those, yes. Without litigation, some of those are debatable.
Right.
What I read, I, the way I interpreted is that they, they can do plating in the ETJ, and that's about it.
Yes.
They can do the plating, because now some of the statute shows that ETJ can't be annexed in without the approval of the voters.
Yes, that's correct. And so some of the, that you look at in the ETJ statute is just very limited to plating, which can extend a little bit into public nuisance, but not much further than that.
Right.
And I know, only y'all's plating and stuff too, if, uh, if y'all's, if it doesn't have a public sewage available, and it has to be on-site sewage, you still have to go through the, uh, county, on-site sewage officer to get approval and stuff too. And I think there's some limitations on the roads and stuff in the ETJ that the county commissioner still has to oversee the road building in a subdivision, so.
I believe that's correct, yeah. Commissioner?
If we might say, we hope there's a liberal interpretation of this agreement and those abilities. And we appreciate the city's willingness.
Yeah.
To, to step in.
We do too.
We, we do understand that it's just the subdivisions, individual properties and everything are not part of this. It's just the subdivision developments.
This issue was much, um, more black and white.
Yeah.
Especially when this law was enacted. And, um, as, as I said previously, the, um, dismantling of the authorities of local government, this is what we're having to grapple with.
Yeah, with, with the recent legislative changes, it's, everyone is trying to figure it out going forward as far as exactly how it's impacting us. So, you know, we, uh, we work with our, our legal references, like the Texas Municipal, uh, group, and, uh, you know, they, they give us some good advice on how to manage and go forward. But we do, we do want to work jointly with the, with the county in managing these issues going forward, so.
When y'all figure it out, y'all phone and call me.
Don't worry.
I do have a question. Um, as far as a floodplain inside the ETJ, is that still rely on our floodplain manager?
Yes, and I would like to say that, you know, we've kind of stepped up to the plate in the city of Tool with our FEMA, uh, management and organization, so we'd like to work in partnership with you on that too. So, anything that happens within that ETJ, we'd like to, you know, know what's going on and if we can be of any assistance there.
Okay. Commissioner, would you like to speak? Judge, that'd be you saying that?
Pardon?
I didn't mean to say that.
No, no, please.
So, um, our ordinance, whether it's in the ETJ or not, still covers the rural parts of the county. And we want to make sure that we don't let anything, especially in the floodplain, get by us. The other question that I've come since the development office has been formed, that I've come to learn a lot about and have one, someone here today, Ms. Mariella Hernandez, that works in Henderson County nine-one-one. In the ETJ areas, there's always been questions of who's going to do the addressing. So that's something I would hope that maybe we can work out as well, because it's a critical.
In this particular situation, this, this does not affect that aspect of it. Quick history, and then we'll move on with the other stuff. But when the nine-one-nine dressing was implemented in the mid nineteen nineties here, the decision was made at that time to allow the cities to name the streets in the ETJ to their desire. Other than that, my understanding, standard practice was, was that, that is, because the district is, was, serves the entire county, municipal, unincorporated, it serves the entire county. I won't go much further off into that, but, um, cities do have some authorities that they retained in that matter, but this agreement has nothing to do, do with that.
Your Honor, I believe that the draft did not have your signature on there. I think that's.
That was fair. Yeah.
And so it should require a judge's signature.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Court. Court, any further discussion? If not, entertain a motion with Judge's authorization to sign.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the interlocal agreement for the city-county plat approval with the city of Tool, Texas, giving the city of Tool authority and exclusive control over plating within the ETJ with the judge's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Tully to approve the interlocal agreement with, uh, excuse me, good lord. Interlocal agreement for city plat approval with the city of Tool, giving the city of Tool authority and exclusive control over plating within the ETJ with county judge's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, consider and take action to set a public hearing on a request of posting thirty mile an hour speed limit on County Road thirty-four thirteen located in precinct four. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, Court, uh, uh, County Road thirty-four thirteen, I've done some checking on that. I had some people, uh, complaining about people speeding on there, and I must have put up a sign. And I checked with the clerk's office, and it had never been legally, uh, gone through court, for the public hearing and stuff, to set a traffic, uh, sign on, on this road. So, uh, we're wanting to, uh, take action to set up a public hearing on that request.
Court, questions? I'm trying to remember, is this one of those that had the longer posting period, longer than?
I think so. I was going to do it for, for twenty, twenty-eight days at least.
Yeah.
I had time to do that, so.
I think that's probably more to.
It may be a month or.
When it gets to the traffic regulations, there was a longer posting time that I remembered. I, and I, I think twenty-eight days probably covers, because I think it's twenty-one, but twenty-eight would definitely cover.
That would make it probably, uh, the thirteenth or the twentieth, wouldn't it?
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seventh, yeah.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seventh.
Any other questions for the Commissioner? Entertaining motion?
I'd like to make the motion to set a public hearing, uh, for the request of posting a thirty mile an hour speed limit, uh, on County Road thirty-four thirteen located in precinct four for February the twenty-seventh at nine-ten a.m.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCam, to set a public hearing on a request of posting a thirty mile an hour speed limit on County Road thirty-four thirteen for February the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four at nine-ten a.m. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item number seven is receive financial reports, of which we have none. Item eight is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. Mr. Bynum?
Uh, yes, Judge, we do have, um, payroll bi-weekly number one. I need to see if I can get court approval on this.
Court, questions on bi-weekly number one? Hearing none, entertaining motion.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the payroll dispersment totals for bi-weekly number one as presented. Any further comments? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Court.
Thank you. Item nine, consider and take action on submitted contracts, which there are none. Item ten, consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits.
Precinct three.
Commissioner McCam?
Yes, I have a couple from Charter Spectrum Fiber Optic Cable. County Road thirty-five sixteen, thirty-five eighteen, thirty-five twenty, thirty-six nineteen, thirty-six twenty, thirty-six twenty-two, thirty-six twenty-three, thirty-seven oh four, thirty-eight twenty, thirty-eight twenty-three, and thirty-six twenty-one. That's for, uh, fiber optic cable, forty-four thousand feet underground, ninety-seven volts in the right-of-way.
Questions for the Commissioner?
Are, uh, are these, uh, any that we, uh, pre-approved in the past that were aerial that are changing to, uh, underground with new plans?
I don't know.
Can you do some checking?
Yeah, I'll do some checking on that.
Okay. Any other questions for the Commissioner? Hearing none, entertaining motion.
I move to approve a notice of proposed utility line activity for Charter Spectrum on those roads that the clerk has.
With your authorization?
With the commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the right-of-way agreement with Charter Spectrum for fiber, for the installation of fiber optic cable along the aforementioned roads with the county commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Passes four-one. Commissioner Tully opposes.
Also have another one for Charter Spectrum, Spectrum on fiber optic cable on County Road thirty-five oh two.
Questions?
For three thousand feet of underground cable.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertaining motion?
I make the motion that we approve the notice of, of proposed utility line activity for Charter Spectrum on County Road thirty-five oh two with the commissioner's signature to approve.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the right-of-way request from Charter Spectrum for the installation of fiber optic cable along County Road thirty-five oh two with the commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor? Oppose? Passes four-one. Commissioner Tully opposes. Item number seven, oh, excuse me. Item number eleven, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments, of which we have none. Item twelve is consider and take action on payment of bills. Uh, Ms. Monk?
For fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we have bills going in at a hundred and forty-six thousand, ninety-eight dollars and forty-seven cents.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tully?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertaining motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three bills in the amount of a hundred and forty-six thousand, ninety-eight dollars and forty-seven cents as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three bills in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand, ninety-eight dollars and forty-seven cents as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Ms. Monk?
Fiscal year twenty twenty-four, we have bills going in the amount of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
No questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tully?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
None.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
I will state that of this, um, amount of the, in the twenty-four bills is our annual maintenance on the L-three Harris, uh, radio system, which was two hundred and thirty-some odd thousand of this. This is for the complete, the annual payment. Any further comments? Entertaining motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four bills in the amount of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the two thousand and twenty-four bills in the amount of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents as presented. All those in favor of the motion? It passes unanimously. Excuse me. Item thirteen is consider and take action on submitted plaits, and there are none. Item fourteen is open and consider bids, of which we have none. Item fifteen is consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner McCam to adjourn at nine forty-one a.m. All those in favor of the motion? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much for being with us today.